Good evening and welcome to the August 12th, 2025. Council meeting for the Village of Holly. Clerk, please call the roll.
Weinbrunner?
Here.
Wendell?
Here.
Ryan?
Here.
Cascola?
Here.
Cole?
Here.
Kyre?
Here.
Brandon?
Here, we have a quorum. If you are willing and able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This brings us to the approval of our consent agenda. All items listed under consent agenda are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the village council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and discussed separately immediately after consent agenda approval in its normal sequence on the regular agenda. Lisa, can you please read the consent agenda?
A, agenda approval. B, consideration of the approval of the village council minutes of July 8th, 2025. C, consideration for approval of the special event application for the Holly Area Community Coalition Family Fund Color Run on September 6th, 2025. D, consideration for approval of the special event application for the Holly Area Schools Homecoming Parade on October 10th, 2025. E, consideration for approval of the special event application for Witch's Night Out on October 3rd, 2025. F, consideration of approval of the amended fiscal year 2025 to 2026 fee schedule. G, consideration of approval to the amended fiscal year 2025-26 meeting calendar. H, acknowledgement of receipt of business registration for Impact Fitness. I, acknowledgement of receipt of business registration for More Than Subs LLC. J, consideration of the approval of warrant 2025-008 in the amount of $615,091.27.
Do I hear a motion? That's awfully loud. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion by Kyre.
I will second that.
We have a second by Cole. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Ryan?
Yes.
Cascola?
Yes.
Weinbrunner?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Kyre?
Yes.
Wendell?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes, motion carried. This brings us to tonight's presentation. Do you want to see if he's here? You talked to him today?
Yeah.
Okay, so we are waiting for the recipient of a citizen recognition award. So, in the meantime, I will entertain a motion to...
I'll do it right now.
I'm not going to finish that sentence. I'm just going to speak very slowly.
And slow.
It looks like he's pulling in, so please bear with us for just a moment.
So it's presentation A as an apple.
Yes. A, as an apple.
He's just trying to find a good place to park it.
What's that? Of course.
Should be all costing lots.
(laughing). There he is. The man of the hour.
Ladies and gentlemen, our just around.
Did you find a good parking spot out there, Vince? We saw you circling around.
There was a little plate up there.
Well, Vince, if you'd like to approach the podium, please.
Sure.
All right. So this is our first presentation of the evening, and this is in recognition of Vince Iafano. In recognition of your extraordinary contributions to the Village of Holly. When the closure of Carl Richter Center left our staff facing an uncertain future, you stepped forward with generosity, vision, and commitment. In a moment of great need, you offered not only your skills and labor, but also gifted the village a new home, providing a building at the cost of materials. That building, now valued at $2.1 million, stands as a lasting symbol of your selflessness and dedication to our community's well-being. Your initiative helped the village overcome a significant challenge, and your actions reflect the very best of civic spirit. And here's what the plaque says. Will you pass this down to Tim and have him take it to Vince? In grateful recognition of Vince Iafano for outstanding generosity and commitment to the community, your donation provided a vital space for our municipal staff to continue operations in a time of urgent need. Your selfless support embodies the spirit of civic pride and service that strengthens the heart of our village with sincere appreciation. I'd like to come out and shake your hand.
Thank you. Your work.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
And feel free to take the mic if you'd like.
I will, I will. Just can't take it home. Hi, Daniel. Thank you, council. I'm kind of speechless, a little bit stunned because I didn't realize I was going to be recognized like this. It's easy for me to do what I do. Great people in Holly. I mean, I meet them every, every week. Generous, kind people. And alls I do is do what my parents told me to do, treat others as I want to be treated. So it's, it's, it's easy out there. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, did you want any more photos before we continue?
Yes.
With the council or anyone?
Should we get a photo of Vince back here with us? Vince, why don't you step back here with us and we'll get a photo? Hopefully, we all had our eyes open. Was I winking? Okay, and our next presentation will be provided by the village manager. The village has historically looked at cityhood in the past. Last year, village council had a cityhood committee present their findings, which at the time recommended that we proceed with the process. At the time, council postponed this item. As we now have many new council members, we have asked the village manager to present an introduction to the incorporation process to council for understanding and consideration. Tim?
Thank you, Madam President. I apologize if I'm a little frazzled. Both the village attorney and I were in a hearing all day with Eagle. Didn't until after, I didn't leave his office till after 5:00, so we ran over here. So my brain is still kind of in that, so we're transitioning a little bit. Didn't have the afternoon we thought to prepare for some of this. But, so as, as you mentioned, Madam President, so in January 2024, the village council established a cityhood committee to review cityhood. In May 2024, the committee recommended the council take, place the cityhood question on a future ballot, but the village council voted to postpone this item at the time. And so, in order to, because I know we have a new council here, a newer council since this was last presented, I was going to just do a brief presentation of cityhood. Kind of let us all get on the same page for it. As well, if anyone hasn't seen, there is like a one sheet, kind of front and back, back there. It just kind of talks about some of the advantages, disadvantages, frequently asked questions, what the process is, and some facts for anyone that's interested in that going forward. So a brief timeline. 1838, Holly became official township. In 1865, we incorporated the Village of Holly. In 1890, the Village of Holly builds the town hall with the township. In 1895, the Village of Holly comes under general law. I, you know, put care nation in there just as a, you know, reference point. But in 1982, we switched from general law to a home rule charter village. And we're currently here and looking at what our next steps might be. So looking at some of our demographics within Holly. I have some up there just so we kind of know what we're looking at. I think the important things to consider with this as far as when it comes to looking at cityhood, what the actual requirements under MCL 117.7 are. And that is, we can't have less than 2,000 inhabitants. We're obviously over that. And not less than 500 inhabitants per square mile. We're obviously well over that as well, as far as the requirements of cityhood. Another thing to consider is that Holly is the third largest village in the state of Michigan. The only two villages that are bigger are Beverly Hills is the largest, and Milford is larger than us as well. And there are 132 cities in Michigan that have a lower population than Holly does. So some of the, you know, facts upfront. So, you know, we're going to talk about some of these things. Village Holly residents currently pay $2.74, five, four mils of Holly Township. One of those administration, 1.2664 is the Township Library, .4790 is Township Parks. Incorporation as a city would eliminate a layer of government. So this one's a little tricky because of our special assessment. The Village of Holly has, has not increased taxes since 1982. We did a special statement, we didn't increase taxes. But, and, so the Village of Holly is a full-service municipality, open to public for 40 hours per week. The Village of Holly is the third largest village in Michigan. We talked about that. There are 132 cities in Michigan smaller than us. Villages are not primary units of government. That's, you know, we have, we have a township. Cities are primary units of government. Cities receive a higher tax revenue share from the state than villages and townships. As we talked about a lot during budget timeframe, proposal A limits the yearly property tax increase to be equal to lesser of the inflation rate multiplier of 5%. Incorporation does not affect tax levied by the schools or county. So when we're looking forward at this, you know, those are kind of some of the things that we're looking at with the facts. So, putting our local government in context, all right? We're talking about the different cities, villages, townships. So counties have delegated power only. And the village journey, if I'm wrong on any of these things, please step in. Cities, so there's a home rule, fourth class, fifth class. And then, we would be considered home rule. We would establish our charter if we were to do it. Similar to our home rule village, we would have a home rule city based on our population. Villages can be general law or home rule, and townships can be general law or charter. The other types of governments that are also in Michigan, we also have intermediate school districts, school districts, and different kinds of authorities that exist. But those are the types of governments that exist within the state. So, and as they are recognized, they kind of go in that order too. So townships are considered like, as far as the state looks for grants and all of, and like say revenue sharing, townships are lower, village, cities, like that. So as far as the CVT is, they call it. So, a lot of people talked about city versus charter township. There's been a lot of discussions about that. So I just wanted to get in front of that and kind of talk about some of the pros and cons of each. As a home rule city, a pros would be, one of the pros would be autonomy and control. So we have greater authority to govern and make independent decisions. Flexibility in our governance. We'd have the ability to adopt our, a unique charter for structure that is structured for our local government. Under zoning land use and control, we'd have an enhanced authority over our zoning laws and our land use regulations. Obviously, it's very similar to what we currently have as a village. We just have more control over it because it'd be a single form of government. Direct service provision capability to provide a wider range of municipal services directly to residents. Again, we already have been acting as a city for quite a while. We provide these services, we'll still be able to do it at a higher, at high quality. And we have some increased services that we provide that we will talk about in later slides. Local identity provides strong sense of community identity and engagement amongst residents. One of the questions that we get asked a lot is like, or concerns that people have is, you know, I like being the Village of Holly. Well, there's no legal reason we have to change our name from the Village of Holly to the City of Holly, or the City of the Village, or Village of the City of Holly, or like Clarkson does. We could literally just call ourselves the Village of Holly and be incorporated as a city if we want legally. So if that is something that's important to the village as far as maintaining that character, that identity for us, it just, this incorporation just allows us more opportunities. Economic development opportunities, increased ability to attract businesses through tailored incentives and regulations because we would be, we would be more attractive for grants and opportunities for that. Access to funding, improved access to state and federal funding opportunities for urban areas. Cons, potentially higher administrative costs than a charter township due to, you know, having more, more services. Because we're offering more services, of course, we would have a higher administrative cost than a charter township. Increased regulations, again, because we have more local regulations that, you know, many bird businesses or residents might find burdensome. And voter responsibility, greater responsibility for voters to engage actively in local governance and elections. So, because it's all here locally and we have a lot of, you know, we have our own charter, we have our own ordinances, all these things that we currently have, it just has a higher responsibility on the residents to get involved than perhaps a charter township. On the charter township side, potentially lower property taxes compared to cities, which could result in a cost saving for residents. However, this comes at the cost of reduced services. So yes, you might have that, but then you might not have the same police service. You might have the same fire, level of fire service, DPW and all of these things that people have come to expect. A pro, also of charter township, you can maintain that rural character. Ability to be more, make a more suburban rural lifestyle and environment if that's what we desire. County services, usually you'd rely on, many charter townships rely on county services for certain. Now, that can alleviate some burden and costs. However, with us specifically being in Oakland County, I mean, this is kind of true, these are kind of truisms across the board. But knowing Oakland County services and how much it costs to bring in, this isn't really true here as far as it being a more attractive offer for us as far as the financial side. Again, a lot of these numbers, we're going to have a tech crunch a lot more once we get a specific direction from council. This is really just a broad overview based on looking at the past studies that have been done by the cityhood committees, looking at, looking at comparable communities that have gone through this, and all of the information that's been provided by NNL and other services. But when we actually crunch the numbers, there's a lot of things that we have to decide first and actually tell us what, you know, what these numbers will be. Limited authority. There's a, a cons of charter township. They have limited autonomy rather. They'd have less control over governance, greater reliance on state laws and regulations. Fewer governance, governance flexibilities, limited to, they're limited in their ability to create unique governing structures or charters. Their restricted zoning control, they have reduced authority over zoning and land use decisions compared to cities. If they're depending on county services, the potential delays we talked about, limitations in service delivery, and again, that depends on the county, our county, we know that's the case. And potential for dissatisfaction because residents may feel less engaged or represented due to the reliance on county services rather than having independent services, which we've already seen within our, our area as it is. So that's city versus charter township. So why would we want to become a city right now? Again, I haven't, all right. So we talked about some of these already. Autonomy and local control. Incorporating as a home rule city provides us greater autonomy, allowing Holly to govern itself with a charter tailored to our unique needs that we have. This helps facilitate localized decision-making without reliance on township governance. Streamline government structure. Transitioning to a city status would consolidate the governmental functions, eliminating duplicative services between the village and the township. Residents would interact with a single government entity for all local issues, from taxation to zoning, thereby reducing confusion over zoning and ordinance authorities. Tax savings. Residents may experience a reduction in property taxes by eliminating the township taxes. The new city would manage its own tax collection and could potentially lower rates through increased efficiency. On your one sheet, you kind of see, I took some examples of different businesses and locations, kind of give you examples of what annual savings realized might be. You would have to look at your own taxable value, and we could talk about that at later date, but it's so individualized based on what you pay in taxes, what your potential savings might be. It's a higher form of government. Cities operate at a higher level of government hierarchy than villages, granting them more leverage with county and state authorities. Legislation developed by the state is primarily tailored for cities and townships. Enhanced funding opportunities as a home rule city, Holly would have a stronger position to negotiate for state and federal funding, as cities often receive more favorable treatment and funding allocations compared to villages. Potential for increased taxable value. Again, this is what I'm saying, said about, we have to look at some of these numbers, but potentially including areas currently served by the village's water and sewer services would increase the city's taxable value, expanding its revenue base. We're going to talk about that a little bit when we talk about how we draw boundaries based on the petition process that we're going to talk about in a little bit, which is a requirement for this process. Improved service delivery. Now, this is one, I mean, the city, we already, we already manage services such as police and fire, public works. So we would still be able to respond to our community's, communities' needs, but we'd also have necessary order of review appointed that would help us oversee property assessments. That doesn't mean we're going to go and assess anyone at that time. It just, we would now have that responsibility. So it's not like we come in and we assess everyone. That's not how it works. Public engagement. Residents would have more opportunities to participate in local governments through the charter process and elections for city officials fostering greater civic engagement. I don't know, anyone that's served on a board and commission or on council has already expressed how dated our charter is and that we need to do our charter rewrite anyways. This is a great opportunity to rewrite our charter to meet our current local needs. And again, a new charter would no longer be a subunit of Holly Township gaining control over its operations. Becoming a home rule city would allow residents to establish a modern organization through the adoption of a home rule city charter. This new charter developed by elected residents would aim to create the most efficient government for Holly while adhering to state laws. The charter would then require approval through an election of city residents, ultimately providing a more flexible government organization and the opportunity to update outdated ordinances. And it's also an opportunity for us to preserve our community identity. As I already stated, incorporation does not necessitate a change in the village's name and character. The identity of the Village of Holly can be preserved even as its traditions to city sta, uh, even as we transition to city status, ensuring the continuity of our community heritage. So what are potential concerns, cons? Transition costs. The incorporation process entails various costs, including legal fees, public hearings, the drafting of a new charter, hiring a charter change commission. These expenses can be significant and may strain the current village resources. We believe that through some of the other things that we're going to talk about as far as the, the next slide, as well as us being able to have a charge administrative fee, we'll cover some of these things, but not in its entirety. And we really need to, if we decide to move forward, we need to hammer out what some of these costs would be. We'd have the loss of township representation. Residents of the new city would lose the ability to vote in township elections because they would not be part of the township, potentially limiting their influence on issues that affect them at the township level. If, you know, if...
Tim?
Yes?
Apparently, they're having a hard time hearing you on YouTube.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can you hear me now, YouTube? Let me see if I'm coming through on the mics. All right, I'll slow down a little bit. I know I can go fast.
Thank you.
All right, administrat, administrative challenges. The transition may present initial administrative challenges as the village adjusts to our new responsibilities, including property assessments and tax collections. Community concerns. Residents may have apprehensions about the shift from a village to a city. Kind of already talked about that a little bit, including the fear of losing that small-town feel and the complexities involved in adapting the new government structure. I, I don't think anyone here really believes that, you know, if we become a city tomorrow, we're going to have a Home Depot at our intersection down there, and that's not what we're looking for. We're looking at opportunities that we can progress and provide the type of governance that we've already been doing, but give us the resources needed to do that more effectively. And then political divisions. The incorporation process could create political divisions within the community, specifically as we're talking about township versus a village, particularly if there are differing opinions on the necessity or desirability of becoming a home rule city. So, another elephant in the room, want to talk about a little bit, is that if we are to become a, if we were to start this process, if we were to become a city, so we would have a division of assets and liabilities with the township. So if we proceed with the process of obtaining city status and ultimately complete it, an agreement will need to be reached regarding the division of township assets and liabilities. This includes assets such as cash or investments, fixtures, buildings, and equipment, as well as liabilities like outstanding bonds and other debts. The State Boundary Commission, which we'll talk about that process in a little bit, will equitably divide these assets and liabilities based on practical considerations, discussions, and appropriate proportion of the assessed value, valuation that the new city represents in relation to the total township. Real property owned by the township that is located within the city will be held jointly and subject to the same division. There are, there have been cases, many cases where a village has gone to cityhood and the township says, oh no, we need to start spending all our money. And there had to have been like injunction orders that have got in, said, hey, you can't spend any more money until this whole thing's been processed out. So that is another where there can be a political division if that comes about, or if they're trying to get new bonds or something like that, that we don't want to take on those additional liabilities. So those are considerations that we need to understand going forward. We talked about some of the additional duties city government will have. The three big ones are the, the responsibility to assess property, our responsibility to collect taxes, and conduct elections. So what does this timeline look like? If you look at the back of your incorporation process sheet, we got a little bit of this. If the village council proceeds with cityhood, they initiate a petition process which includes the proposed boundaries. So we'd have to decide what the proposed boundaries were. Before we go about this, I would recommend bringing someone in that is more of an expert than I am on this process, so we, that we dot our Ts and cross our Is on this, so that we do everything right and we do everything legally as we move forward. Petition must contain signatures of 5% registered voters who own property in the village. After collection of signatures, but the petition is filed with the State Boundary Commission. State Boundary Commission conducts a sufficiency hearing to ascertain the accuracy of application and proposed boundaries. If the petition is sufficient, the State Boundary Commission establishes a date for a public hearing. Village residents will have 45 days to file a petition opposing city incorporation. That includes any people that would be in the included boundary. So if they are people that would be annexed in, I know that's the dirty word to not use, but anyone that would be in that case, they would be also able to petition on that. If no petition is filed, State Boundary Commission establishes a date for the election of a charter commission by members. So this is an actual, would be the first election that occurs, where we, State Boundary Commission says, hey, everything's above board, we've kind of agreed how we're going to move forward. We get a charter change commission, nine members. I'm going to talk about what that looks like. In fact, you know what? We'll do it right now. So there are nine members of a charter commission. A commission has a three-year duration. It usually doesn't take three years, it takes six months, two years on average. It depends on how long it takes to do it. For us, we have a charter that exists that we can use as a framework. We're going to change a lot, so, and I don't know how much of that they're going to throw away or they're going to keep. It's an independent group that, that is elected to create this charter. The charter may be presented up to the electorate. It can be voted on three times, up to three times. The commission may meet 90 times without compensation. They may be, be able to meet more without, and they may receive compensation for only one meeting a day. And those are kind of the rules when it comes to a charter change commission. Once they're elected, they have 90 days to develop a charter. Now, in there, this is what it says, but it actually, it's, they have 90 meetings to develop a... Once they're elected, they have 90 days to develop a charter, now, in there, this is what it says, but actually, it's, they have 90 meetings to develop a charter in order to do that, they have a longer time to actually do that. The draft of the charter is sent to the governor for review. The charter is presented to the village voters for approval or rejection. If the vote is passes, the charter is filed with the state of Michigan, and the new city begins operation on the date as proposed in the charter. Usually, this complete process takes an average of nine to 24 months as we go through this entire thing. So, we talked about charter commission, so when we're actually making this charter, if this charter goes through, the options that we are going to look at, so what kind of governing structure do we have? Do we want to continue with the council manager form of government that we have now? Do we want to look at a strong mayor, council, government? That's another option. We can do a combined one, where it's a weak mayor, oral advisor, you know, system, but those are all decisions that would be made later down the road by the charter change commission as they're going through. Are we doing nonpartisan elections or partisan elections? At-large, ward or district council elections or combination? Will the mayor be chosen at large by the highest vote total among those running for council, or elected from among the council members? Do they vote for the, the mayor of the group? Term limits would be established then, and we decide whether clerk and treasurer are appointed or elected. What must a charter include? The election of the mayor, election of council or commission, clerk, treasurer, assessor, board review, other officers, nominations, elections, qualifications, duty, compensation, officers, the tax rate not to exceed 20 mils, that is by law, not generally. Appropriations, public peace, health, safety, ordinance adoption, Open Meetings Act language, English-language written legislative record, system of accounts. What it may also include is ability to borrow money, install sewer, water, electric, again, we have some of these things, public utilities, special assessments, acquire property combination, franchises, public transportation, regulation of streets and parkways, licensing and regulation, appropriation of funds to nonprofits, civil infractions, public nonprofit, medical facilities. So, a lot of our charter already contains a lot of this language, again, we revise and see what might be appropriate then. What it may not include, increased charter taxation of more than 20 mils, submit a charter more than once every two years, call more than two special elections per year, amend charter except as provided by HRC Act, Home Rule Commission Act, issue bonds except as provided by law, enter into contract with, give or, or to give an office to one who is in default of the city. You know, we talked about the taxation of more than 20 mils, and I know that they're talking about, well, the reason we want to do this is to raise taxes, it's the exact opposite of that. The reason we want to do this is to lower the tax burden on the village residents, so we can remove the duplication of services and lower taxes overall, and by getting increased taxable value, by maybe grabbing more property, and also getting more attractive, you know, to grants and all these things, hopefully, we can increase our revenue streams, not from village residents' taxes, but from these outside sources, allowing us to operate more effectively while lowering the tax burden on our residents. So, frequently asked questions. So, why are we, what are the reasons for becoming a city? So, I think that we, yeah. So, you know, cityhood evaluation is a strategic objective of many councils, in an effort to streamline the government, reduce tax liability for residents and businesses, and further our economic development. We've kind of already talked about almost all these points, I just want to kind of cover them again. What will happen if the village of Holly becomes a city? As a city, Holly will operate independent of Holly Township, Holly residents, businesses, and property owners would no longer pay taxes to Holly Township, that's pretty much a clean answer of that. Will incorporation as a city result in higher taxes? As a city, Holly governing body can levy a maximum of 20 mils, the same as the village can currently levy. The city intends to levy the same as the village currently levies, 11.3254 mils, ideally lowering that if, based on these other considerations, these other variables that we need to decide moving forward. What do residents gain from becoming a city? Residents and businesses can see a reduction of approximately 2.7454 mils immediately as they no longer pay taxes to Holly Township, with a potential of additional tax savings. Residents and businesses will deal with one government, not two. I think both us and the township get daily calls, people confused about who they should go to for certain items. Will becoming a city mean that Holly will lose its sense of community? No, Holly's sense of community is derived from the citizens, we don't even need to legally change our name to the village of Holly, from the village of Holly. And what type of government would exist in the new city? Currently, the village has council manager form of government. As a city, Hollywood would determine the new form when creating the charter. So, I might be talking myself out of a job right now, so. All right, and then my, you know, my contact information is on there for the people at home, if they have any questions, you can always email me or call our offices. We will also have these one sheets available, I'll put it online, as well as have them available in the office. And pending any questions by council, that will conclude my presentation.
I have questions. The library, that village in there, are we just not going to have usage of the library anymore? If we're saving that tax money, we would have to pay for it somehow.
So, that, I think that would, that's a question that needs to be asked and addressed, does, so right now, it's a township library. Does it want to become a district library, a regional library, you know, does it want to change its incorporation process, allowing us to assist with it? So, that would be part of the State Boundary Commission's discussions about, you know, these liabilities that we have going forward, you know, where do we meet, so, again-
No, I, I get that, but my problem is with this sheet, we're making a claim that we're going to save citizens money, but we don't know ourselves how much all these extra services are going to cost versus the revenue we're going to bring in.
Yeah, and until we move forward and we actually have some of these variables figured out, we won't know the answer.
Right, but why are we putting it out for the people?
Because those are township taxes, right now, that are assessed. So, right now, if we were to cut it right now, those are the things that would be removed, without negotiation.
I have a little insight on this, you know, I resigned from the library, but I did go to their first meeting with their new chair and their new members, and they made a motion to begin looking into becoming a district library. And if that's something that they do, depending on who becomes part of that district with them, if they have enough residents, they might end up charging whichever areas are involved less than they're currently charging, so that is one possibility. But it, just because they are looking into it, doesn't mean that it's going to happen, so I don't want to say that that's a certainty, it's obviously not, that's a long, hard process for them to look into as well. But it's, once again, like Tim said, until we have answers to these different things, the library might be its own entity, it might be a township, it could be a city, we don't, we don't have a hard figure on that yet.
Right, we don't have hard figures, why are we telling citizens that this will save people money?
We do have hard figures, if we look at, as I also resigned from the library board, we do know what all the area townships pay into the library, like Groveland pays a set amount into the library.
Right, that's just one thing, there's also assessing-
We can look at how much, I mean, you can deduce by looking at how much they pay and how many residents they have, including Rose and Groveland, and compare it for ourselves, right? We can look at our numbers too, and see how many residents are yours, how many residents are Groveland, and how much they pay.
No, I, I, I understand that, but right now, we are making a claim on this, as this initiative will save village residents and businesses X amount of money, depending on their taxable value each year. But we can't make that claim if we don't have those numbers to begin with. For all we know, all those extra services, when we actually get those numbers, will actually increase it. So, I don't know how we can put this out for citizens if we don't actually have the data for it.
I'm a little confused how you think subtracting a layer of government is going to end up costing us more.
Well, we have to run our elections, that's going to cost money, assessing, that's going to cost money. I'm not sure how much more work it'll cost employees, but they might have to hire more, potentially hire more people to cover it. There's just a whole list of stuff that we have to do, and we're making a claim we're going to save the money without actually having the stuff already for it.
Well, the township does assessments, and you said assessments, and what else, elections? For 12,000 residents, we would have to do it for, that's hard to give an exact number, but it's not going to be 12,000, it's going to be between six and, what, seven, eight? We, I can't say a number, I don't know, that would depend on the boundary line.
My point is that we're putting out a document for people, saying it's going to save them money, but we don't know if it's going to save them money when we ourselves don't have the numbers to input into it yet.
I think, would you feel more-
My point is just with the document, not moving forward.
Would you feel more comfortable, I, I see what you're saying, and I understand it, would you feel more comfortable if it, if the wording was more like, it could potentially save or something, so it wasn't such a concrete, this will save you? Would you be more okay with that?
Honestly, I'd be more okay if that section just was even in there, because we just don't know. I mean, I, I was on the committee for cityhood this year, along with Tascala, and when I was, we didn't really go that far into the numbers, which is why I was the only person that recommended not to pursue cityhood at the time, because we didn't have that information. And I've since done research on it, and the costs to me are not adding up to actually saving money, but that's just what research I can do by comparing it to other communities and stuff like that, so we actually have hard numbers we can input to it. I don't think we should have any section there saying we're going to save money, or it's going to cost more money.
I have to agree with, I have to agree with you on that somewhat, Thomas, because it's hard to say what it is or isn't going to cost us, because when we put the boundaries out, we're going to, as Tim said, for lack of a better word, annex people into the city.
Potentially.
Potentially, so that could increase some revenue, but also, like, the library thing, I, if I'm not mistaken, I remember living somewhere where we didn't have a library in our city, we had to go to another city's library. So, it's like a little fee that the, they had to pay to be able to use the library.
Right.
So, I, I mean, even that could be one of the things to look into, if I'm not mistaken, for that part.
And I'm comfortable with the library doing this thing, and making sure people in the, in the village are still going to have access to it. Like, it's a bunch of smart people running that board, like, I'm comfortable with making sure it's taken care of. My concern was just that, and here, it shows that we're getting rid of what we're spending on the library.
Well, and then I understand, like, your feelings, where if we come out and say, we're going to save you money, and then we don't, right?
Right.
There, there was also one thing I forgot to add as well, is that though, for taxes, the township charges every collection, like, does a 1% administration fee, that would also come to the village as well. We'd get initial 1% administration fee that are, that is, township currently charges in taxes.
And do we know how much that would be?
1% of, I mean, again, we'd have to go over the entire-
Right, from what I calculated-
The boundaries have to be drawn first.
That's like around 60,000, from what I've got from it.
Yeah, we'd have to look at what the actual numbers would be, I'd have to look at it. It, it's not astronomical, but it's also not, I mean, it potentially could cover, like, assessing services, depending on price, depending on cost.
Would you feel more comfortable if, under the facts section, if the township library was separated out, you know, where it explains Holly Township is 1.0 for administration, 0.479 for township, and then if they said, but, the township library is 1.2664, and their status will be, is to be determined?
I'm not worried about the facts section, because like, those are just straight up facts for it.
Okay.
I'm just more concerned about us putting out there that we are saving citizens money.
So, this second sense, this second bullet point here will be reduced by 2.7454 mils?
I think he's looking here, on the front page.
I'm more the chart below it.
Oh, in the box.
The purple, you're talking, right?
Okay.
Because, yes, because again, it would be reduced by those if we're not paying township taxes.
Would you, if we just took numbers out, and you said it has the potential to reduce, without, with a non-specified number?
I mean, but also has the potential to increase.
I mean, my, my suggestion is-
So, if we're going to put reduce, then we should also put increase.
We just had, Manchester just did this, so we should be able to look at their budget before cityhood to after cityhood, and that would give us a good indication of what they come up with. So, for instance, we've, I think, and was it 25, that state revenue share has gone up for cities versus village?
I don't even think we have to compare to other municipalities.
We should be able to say that, so we could say, for instance-
We could just go straight up to the counter, be like, hey, how much would it be for us to do our assessing? How much, or find out how much it'd be for elections? We can get out the actual information, ourselves, we don't really get to compare it.
And don't, don't forget that the state revenue share will be 3% instead of 1.8, or 1.6, what are we now, 1.8 or 1.6?
When I looked that up as well, that only equated to like around $7,000 on the high end that we would get.
I'm, I'm going to have to see the math on that, so.
Because I thought that was the, at the last meeting, the township indicated most of their money comes from state revenue share.
Yeah, like, do, does anyone happen offhand to have state revenue share on you, because it's going to double? Pre- pretty much, 1.8 to 3.0, close enough.
That, that's, the multiplier goes, fits into an equation, it doesn't just-
Oh, that's right, that's a factor of three, right.
I, I would, I feel, I think, again, the next step of this would be provide, actually, like, when we talk about, like, this is just the theory of it, the concept, the next step would be to provide hard numbers based on-
Which I'm all for getting the hard numbers, but I think we need to have the hard numbers before we make the claim we're going to save people money.
Put the numbers on here. So, if he just took out this dark purple piece, would you be more comfortable with this sheet being passed out?
And probably even-
Just removing the chart for it.
Removing the whole chart?
Right, because, I mean, without that rate there, those numbers are still saying that annual savings realized for it, but we don't know.
Okay.
I'm okay with removing the purple chart.
Yeah.
I see what you're saying.
I would even say, just say, removing township taxes, but not putting a number on the mils.
And then up here could be reduced, instead of will be?
I know, but I'm just saying that we don't be-
In this section?
I can do a graph where it's not- I mean, it's, it's not my document, it's the village manager's document, I'm just saying, myself, I don't feel comfortable telling people they have the potential to save money if we don't know if they're going to save money.
So, my take on this is, none of us are going to support it if people pay more. So, I, I would say something along the lines of, with the goal of saving more money, because if it comes back in the number say we pay more, who of us is going to say, let's go for it?
We're not, we're going to stop, I don't want to, I don't want to pay more than I pay right now.
I don't mind having to say it with the goal, it's just putting actual dollars out there, saying that we're going to save this, which is how it reads right now.
Yeah, the intention of this whole process, my understanding, was to save residents, you know, to reduce tax liability for residents across the board, not only removing, I truly believe, if this is done correctly, that I believe the realized savings would be reduced even further, because of the increased taxable value and all of these things. But, again, until we actually have, know some of those variables, and we're going to have to probably do, you know, different courses of action, like, if this happens, this would be if this happens.
Excuse me there, Tim, Mr. Gildner? Is there a possibility, like, when we're in high school, you know how we do these staged things, where we could actually just stage us doing that? Where we're putting, we don't put a committee together, but we say, okay, we're going to act like for an hour, we're a city, and we're going to figure out everything that we need to pay, and everything we're going to spend, and everything we're going to bring in, and then-
We can't, and the reason why is because the Boundary Commission would have to decide where to annex, and we wouldn't be able to get those numbers without knowing exactly how many residents and businesses would be included.
Okay, that, that's, that's what I was asking.
I like the idea, I wish we could, but we can get potential estimati- estimishes.
Yeah, we can estimate, like, what it would be with our current borders, and what it would be like if we annexed a property set we need to be.
That way, at least we can get some kind of numbers, that's all.
And, and that's going, that's listed as part of, you know, part of the process, is going to be looking at those things, right? So, right now, we're just looking at how to, how to present this sheet in a way that council's comfortable with, this fact sheet, going forward. So, I liked Councilman Cuskela's idea of the goal of, otherwise, we wouldn't be going forward with it. And is this something that the village intended to pass out or to mail to homes, is that kind of what we were thinking?
Just, you know, I, I think there's an information campaign that we'd like to do in order to make sure people are knowledgeable about this, and, you know, just have it available for, there's going to be people that come to our desk, there's going to be people in the township that will want to know about the process. And, again, it's not, it's not intended just to be propaganda, it's supposed to be, like, informative, and I agree with every point you're making, Councilmember Ryan, as far as, like, we want to tell the truth in here, and it is the goal, the goal is, you know, in order to reduce tax liability.
And so that we're not sitting here all night with this, could this go in front of a subcommittee to review, before it's passed out to the public, to review for both honesty and brevity? Which subcommittee would be appropriate, you guys?
I don't even know that we need it, honestly, to go before a subcommittee, I feel like if we just make the motion tonight and say this, we don't like this part.
Do we not like that part, or do we like that part with, that's the goal? Change the wording to, the goal would be this or better? Because at that point, if it's not that or better, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be pursuing it anymore.
Well, I, I would think that the first probably step would be council deciding whether or not they want to pursue this process. And if the council decides they want to start the petition process, then as we move forward with that, that's when we clean up the advertisement for it, and, you know, and, you know, because you have committees that are involved in that, it's going to be, have to be a community-led initiative too, to have this. So, I think that would be part of, you know, as they're getting petitions, the petition side, they would be passing this off, because it's not going to be Lisa and I doing the petition, like, that's, you know, it's a community-led initiative, I do it, so.
Is it possible to say, um, the possibility of saving this or?
I think the goal is like.
The goal of saving, you know, we're not guaranteeing that you're gonna save this much money, but you have the possibility of, you know, for this document right here, for this one, just saying somewhere on there, the possibility of. Because there are some things that we're gonna have to absorb when we take on like, like Thomas had said.
And, and we could, and I, I think we should just be honest about it, we should just say, you know, this is their goal, there's a lot of variables that are associated with this, that, you know, as we go through this process, we wanna be transparent. We can update this document, we can have it be more of a living, like, a living document online, like, so this is currently where we're sitting. These are the numbers we have, um, and then have a, one that is more generic, that is more of the leave, take behind thing that is, you know, for an up, and we have a little, uh, QR code or something on here that says, you know, for an updated version of this, go here. Um, and just have it, you know, on the website, or village, go to the village website for the most updated version. Because again, we're gonna be figuring a lot of this out. This isn't a common process. Cause once people go, once people move from village to city, they don't go back. You know, this is a process that happens once. Almost all the, uh, uh, every committee, the community that I've talked to, and almost without question, everyone is glad they went through the process. So, but it is a process that we have to go through.
Are we gonna be holding any town halls at all for the residents to, uh?
We are holding a town hall tomorrow, uh, not necessarily on this, but a town hall that any resident can come in and ask any questions to village president and I about anything, including cityhood. Um, but yeah, I think it's, we are gonna have to do, the thing is, we want, we want to have an informed electorate that understands this process. So they can make a informed decision as they go forward, whether it's in the petition, whether it's hiring, uh, electing charter, uh, people or, um, or voting on a charter. So we're gonna have to do a lot of community engagement and, and like informing them about, um, all of this. Uh, because it is, it's not, it.
Cut and dry.
There's a lot of things that, you know, I think that people have assumptions on, that we wanna make sure that we're leading with the truth, we lead with facts. I agree completely with, you know, what Councilmember Ryan, we don't wanna necessarily promise one thing if we don't intend to deliver. I think everyone here intends to deliver more so than we even say here, but I, I understand your side.
Isn't it, I think it's a requirement for us to hold town halls once we start going through this process?
There is a public hearing that the state boundary commission holds. There isn't, I, I do not believe there's like requirements for us to hold town halls on it. However, I think that, my understanding, my, my own preference, and I know the village president's preference, and I think council is that, like, we will hold as many as we want, we wanna be, uh, transparent in the process and engage community as we go forward.
Yeah, as of right now, we're doing a town hall every quarter. And if council, and, and I imagine, I know we're going to want to have one on cityhood if we move forward with this process. We can have one where it's a, you know, meeting where we're all sitting back here to answer questions as well and just to tend to.
Yeah, and we'll probably have to do it frequently if we're gonna sell an idea of like cityhood.
And probably like on a Saturday or something like that.
Every step of the process is a diff, is a huge thing. Like the charter's a big thing, just getting people through the vote force is a big thing, so every step you'd wanna keep informing more.
Right, and I, I do also want to just point out, at some point, once this goes before, there has to be an election of the charter commission and it's nine members. So it's not all of us, the people who are sitting here are not.
None of us can be on it.
Yeah, it's not.
Yeah, I was gonna ask that, what about people from the other subcommittees? Would any of them be able to run in those elections?
I can see if there's any language that I've seen.
I think it's just elected officials cannot be on it.
What other?
Oh, we've got people on historic DDA planning, CBA, that aren't necessarily on council. Would they be eligible to run or are they?
Yeah, I, I believe so. They, they can't be members of the governing body, but, uh, they're not members of the governing body, so.
Okay.
There's no prohibition in that area.
So I think something we might all be concerned about is there's only so many volunteers in this village. And most of them are already on some board or other.
All right, well, other than this sheet, I do have, cause I imagine the goal is to vote if we wanna proceed with it or not after this. I do have a few other things.
Go ahead.
For the annex zone that we wanna bring people in for, from where the water sewer goes out, to obviously increase our taxable value, to bring in more state shared revenue and one percent admin fee and all that stuff. From my understanding of it on MCL one one seven point eight, they vote on whether or not they wanna be included in it. I don't know about you, but I don't know anyone that's gonna vote to increase their taxes by over eleven mils.
First of all, how do we know the taxes are gonna be increased?
Because they would be.
You don't know for sure.
They would be part of the city now and they would be not part of the township, so theirs will increase if they get into it.
Where are the taxes gonna be increased?
Because they currently are paying the township taxes, if they're annexed into a city, they're no longer paying the township taxes, they're paying the city taxes.
Okay.
Which is higher.
They, they would, they would be.
How is that higher? That's why I wanna know.
Because the city would be eleven point, what, three right now?
Where do you come when you say it's higher?
So we offer services that the township doesn't like, police and fire. But some people would want to opt into that, some wouldn't. I know I wanted to live in the village because I wanted police, I wanted fire. Um, but some people live in the township because they want cheaper taxes, they wanna be, they wanna be further away from those things.
Right.
Well, and the township also pays an ACFA special assessment, they would no longer pay that on their taxes, they would just be paying for our public service. So there is some back and forth on that. And they may vote, no, they may absolutely say never mind, and, and that is their right as voters.
Right.
But we can't say that it's going up, they have other variables such as paying for those special assessments.
Right.
Yes, it would be, um, so that, again, it's messaging and having them decide. Um, if, you know, again, if they're paying, uh, what are they, two point seven five four five plus the four? So, and then they, actually it's four point one two five now, I think for your ACFA.
For ACFA.
So they're, if they're around eight, we're at eleven, but if we increase taxable value, we can reduce the eleven down to ten nine. I don't know, I, I, again, without.
Right, I'm, I'm just saying that's a gamble we have to consider, like, if they want to join or not.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Cause if that's gonna be a big influx of the money we're counting on for it, then if that fails with it, what's the point of going forward if we need that?
And these are decisions that need to be made.
Right.
Hopefully by.
What were the projected, what were the projected boundaries before Ryan, when you were in the, uh, or Thomas, when you were in the?
I believe we were just keeping it the same and going up to the high school because we couldn't have an island. Like just enclosing where the islands were, is that right?
I don't even think we did anything with the islands, honestly.
Yeah, I think at that point, we were leaving up to the boundary commission to choose the boundaries beyond that.
Yeah, during the petition process, we have to, like, we actually have to, I saw some things that were in the committee's notes, um, last time that I found, I believe, to be inaccurate, but we have to clarify as far as like, you have to actually, in the part of petitions, you have to have your boundary map already drawn. Now, you can't do a boundary map that doesn't, but we can't have islands, that's one thing.
Right.
Um, so again, when we talked about, um, again, we wanna do it transparent as possible. So if we were talking about doing, and if wanting to include places that we include water service, water sewer service, which is, you know, what many cities do, that's how they draw their boundaries, then I think we should be upfront about that. And we should say, this is what we'd like to do, and we'd like to engage them and say, hey, yes, you might have a slight reduction or a slight increase in comparison to what you currently pay. However, you will also have police service there in two minutes rather than two hours. And like, and just, it'd be, it'd be an information campaign about, you know, this is what you see increase and this is what like you're gonna pay for.
Yeah, you're gonna see a taxable increase, but you're gonna see an increase in services as well.
And that's only for township residents, yeah, like that township residents that could be potentially annexed. And the village residents would not, because of increased taxable value, if that occurs, then we can reduce the liability across the board. So when we might be at eleven, three, two, five right now or whatever for us, that could go down across the board because everyone'd be in the village to a lower rate, and that's the idea. That's the idea about giving everyone increased service while reducing the tax liability for the village residents across the board.
What's your next question or point of thought?
Uh, my last concern I had is how do we pay for it? Like going forward for like elections, we currently have no money. We just had to put on the citizens an extra four mils for our public safety. So how do we justify spending more money on special elections to get to that point?
Because again, that's part of the increased revenue that we.
Right, but if it fails at any one of those points, now we're just saying, we just wasted citizens' money on that for something they didn't want. So that's another gamble we'd have to take.
My question to me, what would be the alternative?
Yeah, so my take on this is if we don't do this, what do we do with the special assessment district?
Find all the ways to save money.
And how did that go the last time?
Yeah.
Last night, we had like a month to figure it out, this time we have a lot longer.
I mean, it'd be great if we could figure out how to save seven hundred thousand dollars and it's gonna go up.
Yeah.
And like we heard the chief say, in three years, we're probably not gonna have a police force because everyone's gonna retire. So it's gonna be more than seven hundred grand.
A year.
By the police. So I think without this, I think it, it just shuts more doors for us down the road.
And I don't think it's a waste of time necessarily, if, even if it doesn't go through, right? Like we're exploring avenues to do better things for our villagers. I don't think that's a waste of time or resources necessarily.
All right, anyone else have any questions?
I was gonna say, I might be just, I don't know, putting the cart before the horse or I don't know, but it seems like to me the best thing to do is to know kinda remotely, I know it's gotta go before the boundary commission, but for us up here, to remotely know where the boundaries are gonna be at, so we can have a remote idea of, oh, we're gonna get this many, you know, we're gonna get nine hundred more residents added into our taxable, nine hundred homes I should say, added into our taxable revenue.
That's not something that we have a, have a say in, I, I know that they've got their rules, so we can do guesswork on it, but I mean.
I'm just saying, just some guessworks, we're not totally guessing, like saying, oh, we're suspecting we're, we could, well, we're hoping to get this many, but that way then we can have an idea of what would be the breakdown then if we end up with this and we shoot a little lower number and then if it's higher, it's good, if it's lower, we still may get out.
Right, I think the next step would be getting those numbers and then, once we have those numbers, deciding if we wanna move forward with a citizen-led petition for it.
What does staff think the next step is?
Um, I, I believe the next step would be to, um, I, I agree that like we should look at, um, whether or not we want to engage in maybe a, a private entity outside of like ourselves to maybe run some of these numbers, someone that maybe specializes in this. Uh, if we decide to do that, if we feel like it's necessary to run those numbers to get all those, uh, those facts, it will cost money. I don't know exactly what that is, um, I can look at, I can reach out and determine, you know, through MML or what other organizations out there that do it, you know, who might be the, um, the best people to engage in that. Um, we can run numbers independently, uh, us, again, there's concern that that might be biased, obviously, um.
How much do you think, um, an agency would charge something for something like that?
You know, the, the two numbers, whenever you talk to like a contractor, it's always like thirty thousand or eighty thousand.
I know, it's always twenty thousand dollars, but this is just to run numbers, this isn't to do some extensive study.
Mr. Gildner's just looking down.
I, I, you know, again, having not done this, I can look at, you know, what other, uh, I have, I have someone in mind uh, that, that does this kind of adjacent work, that I can talk to and get a quote, but I wouldn't be able to really throw. And I'm thinking the numbers would be, again, we're looking at like five to eight probably. But again, that's just me throwing out a number randomly based on similar asks of communities before, for this kind of like audit type work.
What's the consensus of council? Do you think it would be better to, um, to kind of look at the boundaries and do guesswork and have Tim run the numbers or spend money, big money potentially, maybe?
Well, I think, I think I can, let me get that number so you know, so you know what you're actually asking. And then, and I can, in parallel, I can start running numbers myself as far as, you know, PC, just look at, again, I, I've been pretty much doing it mostly just on the village, like looking at the village itself. Of course, we've talked about including the, uh, the outlying areas that do water sewer. And I basically do, this is what it would look like with the village, this would look like if we just drove, drove out with water sewer and no islands. Um, and then, and then, you know, kind of, and doing a best estimate that way. And then taking that and deciding, do you want to, you know, get an outside, uh, uh, independent review of this? I, I, probably that's, you know, that way you know what you're actually, uh, asking when we.
And that still won't answer the variable of the library, but it will, it will answer a potential range of the other variables. If you, if you can do a range on it too.
Yeah, I, I don't think that will, uh, that will happen, the library question won't be answered either, um, until we talk about division of liabilities. And maybe not even then, it might not even come in until we talk about the charter, like how we are, you know, if we're, um, including the library and the village as part of our charter, our, our responsibilities and that.
So can you work on a low ball, high ball range?
I can, I can work on it, yeah.
So could we possibly table this then till next meeting?
There, there's no vote today.
Oh, there's no vote, oh, there's no vote, okay.
And, um, just for people at home and in the audience, say that those neighbor, neighborhoods do vote down. They don't wanna be a part of the city of the village of Holly. That boundary comes back to us, right? You can still move forward without those places.
Right, which is why it's important to get the numbers for both of them.
So they're not locked in, this can happen either way. I don't want people sitting at home thinking like, oh, they just made this, or this is happening, that's not where we're at. They still have a vote, they can still say no.
My only other concern is, is like, you say follow the boundaries of the water and sewer go. That means up north Holly Road, it means all the Falk Road stuff.
We, Falk Road dump already belongs to the village.
Oh, it's our, it's, okay, I'm so sorry that I didn't realize that.
But there's a small section though that we'd have to incorporate into it to include that island, but it's a, it's a very small section.
I just wanna make sure we're not gonna incur more costs. I mean, I, I feel for the people that are getting, everything that's going on, but I just wanna make sure that we're not absorbing more frustration and trouble than we need to right now.
So what would be on next month, next month's agenda? What would be appropriate to have on there in regards to cityhood conversations if you come back with a low ball, high ball range?
Um, so I can have a, if, you know, if we are able to determine a, uh, agency that could do it, that could have contracts looked at, like, you know, that, that could be something that if we wanna actually vote on something, we could just do a follow-on presentation that just like, all right, here's, here are the, the, the numbers as I've done them, um, and here's maps, like here's a map, what's our current map look like? And here's, uh, an overlay map of what this new boundary could look like potentially. Um, and, you know, we could do that, um, it depends on how expedited we wanna be with this process, um, and how fast. I mean, um, we could also, um, you know, it, it really, uh, again, it really determines on when we want, if you want to vote for, to begin a petition process. Um, but again, we would already have, we'd have to decide the map stuff.
Can we vote now just to give so much, like you seek these out but not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars?
To do that, I think you would have to, in fact, you're gonna have an item on your agenda today on adding, on adding new business items, uh, according to your rules and procedures right now, I believe you have to have, um, a majority, a majority vote.
This is a presentation, not an action item today.
President, you'd have to have the president, currently as it's written, you'd have to have the president and two council members, I believe, to request it, a majority vote, um, but as, you're gonna have, uh, language in here in your rules and procedure to change it because we saw that as an issue previously, so.
Any further questions about cityhood at the moment, council?
They, I mean, about re-commissions, they actually set the lines, right? So in other words, we can't say, no, we don't wanna take this, they say, yes, we have to do it, right?
Yeah, they're gonna determine, they're, they're actually, we're gonna give them, hey, this is our ideal situation. Uh, and I think that we do that in a way that is responsible, not greedy, I mean, we do it like in a way that's, hey, this is what actually makes sense. Like this is what we think we should do, and then we let the state boundary commission make the final determination on that, cause they will.
Cascola?
Thank you, Madam President. So I know all of us received an email, but no one at home watching or here received it. Uh, just wanted to give props to our village manager for reaching out to the, or acknowledge our village manager for reaching out to the township and saying, hey, I'll come talk to you guys if you have any questions, um, I thought that was really nice. We did ask, um, on the, on the cityhood committee, we asked if the township wanted to come and talk with us. And I think there were some scheduling conflicts there and we never were able to have anyone come and talk with us. So that was, uh, really positive, I think, to see our manager reach out, so thank you for doing that.
And we could, um, invite them into conversations in the future as well, especially when it came to drawing up what we think is fair for boundary issues?
If they would be willing to have a.
If we were to go forward with that.
If council were interested and they would be interested, um, they would probably do a joint session that we'd have to coordinate between them if, if both groups are interested, cause I know they are also talking charter township. And it might be, um, I know. Because I know they are also talking charter township and it might be, um, I know one of the things state boundary commission looks at is are the divisions between the two organizations such that it just makes sense to do a split? Uh, whether it's charter, whether it's cityhood, and I think having those discussions or attempting to make those, have those discussions is a productive step. And I believe, I don't know if the, if we're trying.
I, I don't really have much to contribute honestly to this conversation. I mean, uh, Tim told me that you were gonna have the conversation. I viewed it as theoretical, uh, at this stage of the game, so, um, it, all good questions, all good points brought up, but boy, in terms of drilling down and getting the specific answers, I'm not in a position to do that.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions, council?
Uh, I have, uh, probably really questioning him, but, um, you know, is the township, they're trying to go for a charter ship now?
I can't speak to what the, I, I just, I know that on their last meeting, it was brought up and they had part of their packet they discussed.
But I know you can't, but I mean, they're, they're possibly looking into it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe so.
So that means we're not trying to play a game of who can get to the finish line first, right? Meaning we're gonna get cityhood before you get that?
I don't think they affect each other.
They, they can happen independently.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they're not incompatible.
Yeah, both our populations are at such a point where what we do won't affect them, what they do won't affect us.
Okay.
Well, effect, effect might not be the right word, but-
Right, it won't, it can't stop either one.
Right, those two, um, entities would not be necessarily incompatible. Anything else, council?
And then my other thing was just as like how Tim was saying, an overlay of what we would like to have for the district. Maybe having seen that, you were mentioning, were you gonna mention that for next meeting then or?
Yeah, if that's, if that's council's desire.
I mean, if you can, I mean, cause I, I don't really wanna spend $15,000 on something or whatever it is, if we can just kinda go, we're going down, finish the quick to this, to that, making a square or whatever.
Shannon, do you agree with that?
Yes, I, I have perfect faith in them.
Thomas Ryan, do you agree with that? Buster, Jim, consensus of council, go ahead and make it. Cool. All right. Anything else, council?
Thank you, Madam President.
I think there's plenty of ways Tim can get the general cost related.
Some kind of ish answers, yeah.
Contact township, but they pay for stuff and do the math, it would be for us, contact county, stuff like that, so.
All right then. Uh, calls the audience, public comment. This brings us to public comment. Members of the audience may address council on any item, not on the agenda. Those addressing council will be limited to three minutes of speaking time. After each agenda item, there will be an additional two-minute public comment period to speak to that item before council votes. The exception to this is for items that were the subject of a public hearing. Council will hear all comments for future consideration, but will not have a response at this time. Prior to addressing council, members of the public shall state their name and address for the record. Public comment. Not everybody all at once now. Yes, please.
Mary Blanchard, 3444 Old Creek Drive, Holly, Michigan. And I am passing out some information. Uh, this is regarding, uh, I, I do wanna clarify as well, I'm manager for Holly Township Parks and I am not speaking, uh, regarding parks tonight. I'm speaking as a resident and a person who has been studying our, uh, water issues for five years now. What you see as the front picture is PFOS foam that is on Bush Lake Beach for the township. This is at 501 Thomas Street. Um, we have had multiple days where we have had PFOS foam. Generally, when the wind blows from the east. This particular day, this is probably the worst that I have seen it. Uh, it was a good five inches raised along the entire length of the beach. As I say, this was from the east wind, but if it's blowing in different directions, it's blowing towards the village, Lakeside Park, and if it's blowing in a different direction, it's blowing directly towards the homeowners. So, um, this is not a good situation. Another, uh, second page has to do with an article in the Michigan Outdoor News and this is regarding the updated Eat Safe Fish Guide from 2025. They have made PFOS a greater concern, uh, because of the fact that in the 10 years that the Eat Safe Fish Guide has been, um, out, uh, they realized that PFOS is definitely, um, much more toxic than they thought 10 years ago. And in the last page, uh, of the printout that I had, uh, Eat Safe Fish Guide for 2025. Previously, in the 2023 Eat Safe Fish Guide, uh, PFOS was not listed even though we qualified for both Rice Lake and Bush Lake, uh, for PFOS, um, themselves. But what was listed in that guide was actually mercury because that was considered of greater concern at that time. And now, because they do believe that PFOS is a greater concern itself, uh, they are listing mercury and PFOS for Rice Lake and Bush Lake. At the time that Big Seven Lake, uh, was tested for mercury, um, that was many years ago and PFOS was not a consideration, so it has not been tested.
Mary, I am sorry, but that is your time.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Can I make a motion to give her more time if she needs it?
No. Any further public comment? Okay. Lisa, will you please read item A of new business?
Consideration of Resolution 2025 dash 018, confirming the village president's appointment of Jarrett Hopper to the Village of Holly Planning Commission.
Okay, do I have a first to consider item A of new business?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion by Ryan and a second by Weinbrunner. Okay, any public item, any public item, any public comment on this item? Hearing none and seeing none. Okay. Any discussion, council?
Um, just my questions, can you give us like a little intro on why you chose him for it?
Yes. He applied. His resume is nice. He's attended many meetings. He's always got, uh, he's always had some, uh, pretty good questions and he is interested in serving. I do not know him personally. Anyone else? Cascola.
Now, maybe this doesn't apply for this one, but I think in the, perhaps it does. I wonder if in the future we should have them here so they can talk to us.
Yeah, um.
I think some of these are appointments we can't just say, you're not doing a good job, you're gone. So if you're appointing someone that doesn't really know what they're doing.
That, that is something that you can consider this time if you like for your vote, cause it, it is better when people are here and we can talk to them and get a better feeling for who they are.
He was also a recommendation by Chief Watson, so I don't know if Chief Watson wanted to say anything on his behalf.
Absolutely, please. Thank you.
Yeah, I understand what Cascola's getting at because some positions like planning, you want people with certain knowledge bases for those, so.
And I'm, I'm not saying anything about this applicant. I, I think he is a very smart individual as well. I just think for future, or even-
Chief.
Nope, you're good. And I, I agree with both of you, right? Uh, the problem is, is that we look at the applications that we get and, uh, very rarely do we see anybody that has any experience level in any of our boards and commissions. I served on HDC, planning and zoning board of appeals and very rarely in my 12-year tenure have I seen anybody that was experienced. Now, that's the responsibility of us as a village to make sure that we're training our people to properly, uh, sit on these boards and commissions. I did personally, uh, recommend, uh, Mr. Hopper. I've worked with him in numerous, uh, dynamics in the village for the last six years and, uh, I did appreciate his education and his level of, um, skill. And I thought he would be an asset. Um, you know, we did at one point, uh, bet and interview some of our candidates and then that kinda went to the wayside, uh, Chief McGee and I did. Um, and then, you know, the, our recommendations weren't being recognized by council. So, uh, we stopped doing that process and then when I got word that, uh, Mr. Hopper did apply, uh, I immediately notified, uh, village manager Tim Price and let him know my opinions and my recommendations. I think he's gonna be an asset, um, and look forward to working with him. Uh, and as you all know, I also did recommend, uh, Mr. Cascola, uh, to the planning commission, uh, way back when as well. And he's been an enormous asset, uh, and I do, I do appreciate him, uh, because he's thorough and he reads his packet every time. And I know that when he comes to that meeting, he's gonna ask questions that are pertinent to the case at hand. Uh, I feel that Mr. Hopper is gonna give that same level of dedication and due diligence, uh, which I greatly appreciate because staff does spend numerous hours making sure that these packets that go out to these commissioners are worthy. And, you know, when a commissioner comes in that's prepared, uh, is rewarding to us as staff, knowing that they also took the time to read that packet.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Council, any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Weinbrunner?
Yes.
Cascola?
Yes.
Kyre?
Yes.
Wendell?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes, motion carried. Lisa, will you please read item B?
Consideration of Resolution 2025 dash 019, confirming the village president's appointment of Hillary Elguire to the zoning board of appeals.
Do I have a first to consider item B of new business?
I'll make the consider, or the motion to consider item B of new business.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Wendell and a second by Ryan. Okay, any public comment on this item? Hearing none. Seeing none. Council, any discussion?
Well, you worked with her on the DDA. Do you have any thing to say?
Yes, yes. Um, Hillary is always, uh, inquisitive. She asks a lot of questions. She is very dedicated, very hardworking. Um, I don't think that there's many other people in the village that volunteers as much as that woman does. She is a great organizer. Um, I've worked beside her on a few projects and, and quite admire her work.
I'd have to agree with you there, being with, uh, Hillary for the last three years volunteering and everything else. She'd be a great position, great person for that position. I have no qualms, quarrels or anything that she wouldn't be able to perform or outperform her duties in that position.
Anyone else? Clerk, please call the roll.
Cascola?
Yes.
Kyre?
Yes.
Wendell?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Weinbrunner?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes, motion carried. Lisa, will you please read item C?
Consideration of village council approval of the tentative bargaining agreement with the police officers labeled council and command.
Do I have a first to consider item C of new business?
I'll make the motion to consider item C.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Ryan. We have a second by Weinbrunner. Okay, Tim, can you please introduce this item?
Yes, um, so for actually the next three items, C, D, and E, staff has been collaborating with the unions, representing police command, police patrol and teamsters in the collective bargaining agreements, uh, to find a path forward regarding their union contracts, which expired on June 30th, 2025. Considering during this time, we're also new, we're also, uh, figuring out the budget, figuring out a, uh, special assessment, all these things. It has definitely been, uh, the, the unions have been very gracious with working with us as we move forward. All parties agreed, um, so all three of these are very similar, um, that they're just extensions. Cause we really kinda wanted this, they're extensions for a year, um, with a minimal increase, a 3% increase, um, that doesn't even meet cost of living really. With, uh, and as minimal changes, um, so there are a, a few other changes within them, um, just kind of correcting language that should have been corrected previously, um, representing how they currently work. So rather than saying eight hours since they work 12-hour shifts, as represented in this 12 hours versus eight hours, it included the ESTA language, Earn Sick Time Act language that we're required by law to add. Like I said, it adds a 3% cost of living wage adjustment and I think the only other substantial, uh, difference, um, rather like we, we offer a cash in lieu of, um, of insurance and to incentivize that, we increased it slightly, um, from, I don't remember what the, what was it, what was it?
$2,400.
It was $2,400, now it's $3,000. And really, when people, if we, when we have people do that, it actually just saves us more money. So that's why we, we decided that we wanted to try to incentivize that more to try to save more money on the long term by trying to get more people. And that was something that the union asked for. Um, very base, like again, these are very basic. This is not getting our officers, our teamsters, um, where they need to be. But this is what they agreed to, um, get them through the year so that we can, you know, figure out some of these other issues that we're facing. And so again, that's for your next three, um, the next three agreements.
And all of these are basically just one-year extensions.
They're all one-year extensions, that's correct.
All right.
And we'll start negotiation again in like November, December. So it's not like we have much time, but we wanna start earlier this time so we can actually start, you know, you know, getting, you know, cause we, we started in January and, you know, they should have already, the negotiations already should have started. But it took us a while to get our, you know, feed underneath us and understand the financial situation we were in.
Thank you for sitting at that table and, uh, finding something that they could agree on with us. Any public comment on this item? Any discussion, council? Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Kyre?
Yes.
Wendell?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Weinbrunner?
Yes.
Cascola?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes, motion carried. Lisa, will you please read item D?
Consideration of village council approval of the tentative bargaining agreement with the police officers labeled council patrol.
Do I have a first to consider item D of new business?
I'll make consideration of the village council through the tentative agreement with police.
I think Weinbrunner just made a motion.
Second.
We got a second by Kyre. Any public comment on this item? Council, any discussion? Lisa, please call the roll.
Wendell?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Weinbrunner?
Yes.
Cascola?
Yes.
Kyre?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes, motion carried. Lisa, will you please read item E?
Consideration of village council approval of the tentative bargaining agreement with the teamsters local 214.
Do I have a first to consider item E of new business?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion by Ryan and a second by Weinbrunner. Any public comment on this item? Any council discussion? Lisa, please call the roll.
Ryan?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Weinbrunner?
Yes.
Cascola?
Yes.
Kyre?
Yes.
Wendell?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes, motion carried. Lisa, will you please read item F?
Consideration of approval to the change of language in section 3.2 regular meeting agenda in the council rules and procedures.
Do I have a first to consider item F of new business?
I'll make a consideration of the resolutions 2025 dash 020, supporting the legal lake level petition.
Nope, sorry, uh, letter F.
Oh, I'm sorry. Consideration of the approval to change the language in section 3.2 regular meeting agenda and the council rules and procedures.
Okay, we have, we have a motion by Weinbrunner. We have a second by Kyre. Okay, any public comment on this item? Okay, council, any discussion?
I have a question on it. Um, why a super majority versus a regular majority? Cause I know Robert's rule is just a regular majority for it.
Uh, so number one, just so the rest of council knows, um, Robert's rules is a guideline, not a law.
Right.
And so when we're talking about Thank you.
Madam President, when we, when we discuss this, um, about- Madam President, when we, when we discuss this about why supermajority versus majority, it's because what you had expressed to me is that you wanted maximum transparency to the public. And so like, so that we couldn't just add items arbitrarily to agendas, so that we would have to put it in advance if we were going to add it the day of. Because we wanted to really keep it as an exception, not a rule, that we're adding items to the agenda. So putting it as a supermajority just showed that like, all right, now this is very important that we need to put this on the agenda. That was what you expressed when we talked.
Well, yeah, and that's because I think if you're adding something last minute, now the, the public hasn't had a chance to review it.
Right.
Counsel hasn't had a chance to review it. So if it's something that counsel feels is necessary to vote on right now, emergencies come up, those things happen, okay. But I think it should be a supermajority that says, we all agree and stand by this, that we think that this is so important that we're going to vote on it even though the public hasn't had a chance to review it yet. And, and I do want ways for the counsel to be able to add things without having to go through the president as well, which we didn't have a process set up for that before. Without a process being set up, there was really no way to address it. So now with this, there would be. Any further discussion? Jim?
So my only concern was is the, if we don't have seven members, it does dictate that we have to have five of seven.
So what if we took out the five of seven? Or we added, what the number would be, per six, per five?
Or four.
Per four.
Or just keep it as a supermajority. I mean, at that point, usually.
Just take out the five of seven and just leave it as supermajority?
Yeah.
Okay, so with that, I, I agree with that, it's a consensus right now, not a vote yet, everyone's nodding, okay.
Yeah.
So just that little, um, five of seven in red, it looked like everyone was thinking about taking that out. Is there any further discussion?
If you amend the motion, then.
Yep, we would have to amend the motion to include, uh...
Removing five of seven?
Yep.
If the original person wanted to do that?
Yes, so let's see. Buster, Buster, would you like, would you like to edit your motion to, to say minus the five of seven?
Thank you for moving this part right here.
And Buster, you don't even need to make a motion. If that's fine with you, indicate it's fine, and whoever seconded it, if they join, that's the way it is.
So would you like to add that edit into your motion?
Yes, I would.
And who made the second? Was that, we got a thumbs up from Kyre, okay.
Thank you.
All right, now any further discussion before we move forward? Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Weinbruner?
Yes.
Cascola?
Yes.
Kyre?
Yes.
Wendell?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes, motion carried. Lisa, will you please read item G?
Consideration of Resolution 2025-020 supporting the legal lake level petition to the Oakland County Water Resource Commission for the Stiff's Mill Pond.
Do I have a first to consider item G of new business?
I'll consider item G of new business.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Wendell, we have a second by Ryan. Tim, will you introduce this item?
I absolutely can. And we also have two of our staff members that are, have been working with the Mill Pond Committee, as well as our public affairs officer for the Mill Pond Committee, where Regina's there too, if they, you know, if you have any questions specifically for them. But, you know, you had established the Mill Pond Committee to advise counsel on the future of the Mill Pond. Through our discussions, it's become clear that the most effective way to maintain the Mill Pond while alleviating the financial burdens for the village residents is this petition process with the county, to petition the County Water Resource Commission to establish a legal lake level. At the last meeting, the actual Water Resource Commission came and provided an informational briefing on the process and all that, and the commission agreed to move forward with the recommendation that they would like to see, they've already started the petition process as residents, and they would like to ask counsel to join in on this petition by signing the resolution and also allowing me to affix the village's signature on the parcels that the village owns. The dam committee has already started gathering signatures for this petition. The tax resolution expresses the village's support for the petition, authorizes me to sign on parterion. And I also included some additional information on there on the legal lake level process from the Water Resource Commission. I don't know, Regina, did you want to talk anything about like how your petition process is going or anything? No? You don't have to. You can if you'd like.
Okay. All right, first of all, any public comment on this item? Any discussion, counsel?
What is the, what is the league, the height supposed to be the level?
That, so part of this process is that, one of the first things, once they've approved it, or once we've, once they've ratified the signatures that are on our petition, then the Water Resource Commission would actually do a study determining what the legal lake level would be, like what it should be at. And so we don't know the answer to that yet because they haven't done that study. However, it would be based on historical data. So what we've seen as the lake level typically would be, you know, what was represented? Danny, was that pretty much accurate?
He said it would be pretty close.
Pretty close to what we currently have. And the reason that we want to do this and just again...
Well, I'm, what was it we currently had, though?
What, I don't know, like the, basically, I'm just saying, as far as what you've seen, as far as like historically, not what it looks like right now, but what it looked like before the drawdown, is, is, you know, is what we're talking about. So that is, that is, you know, the, the level. Again, I, I don't know the specific data on that yet, they wouldn't determine that. We have some old studies, but again, they're going to recreate a lot of that. And again, if anyone, today, the village attorney and I were in a hearing all day in regards to this, this whole process and, you know, the, the drawdown with Eagle, you know, we thought it was, we both were, we said we'd be surprised, we were there past noon, and we were there from before nine till after five, and we still haven't done our closing arguments or had a verdict from the judge, which probably won't be out until September at this point. But it was a very informative process. I didn't know, did you have anything that you wanted to add? I don't know how much we want to talk about it yet.
Well, no, but as to this issue right here, I was involved with the Bush Lake years ago, probably 15 years ago at least, there was the, the same process to determine the lake level for, for Bush Lake. So they have to come in, do all kinds of studies, and then they say, we think the lake level should be blank. And if that gets approved, then that becomes the lake level, that becomes the threshold moving forward. And, you know, I can speak about the Mill Pond and today during, you know, my report, but as to this issue, that's how. And then my other question, how many signatures are we needing to have altogether?
So it's anyone that would benefit, well, anyone that's directly on the upper and lower Mill Ponds and out into some areas in the impoundment that, that are, would benefit. So I did an initial draft of it, and then the Water Resource Commission person, he sat down and said, nope, nope, all these other ones. So we kind of sat down, and so, and then we went through the list with Regina, and she's kind of spearheaded the community effort to get those signatures. Do you remember how many are on there?
It's two-thirds, it's in, it's actually in.
Do you remember how many?
We have 76 parcels, we'll need 51 signatures.
So 76 parcel, 51 signature, again, this is in Rose Township too. This is, in fact, the majority of them are Rose Township, so.
Any further discussion, counsel?
Yes, thank you. Does this, what is the responsibility for the residents? Are we committing to spending any money?
So the, the, we, we don't know, like, so the whole point of this is that the county can take it over, they can actually do any kind of assessments or anything to repair the dam. Because, yeah.
But for this right now, are we, are we signing away to spend money? So someone watching at home or?
Not yet, all right? We can withdraw, at, at what point can we withdraw? Until it's?
Before court.
Before it goes to court, we can always withdraw our petition as we're seeing it. Were there any other points that got heard in the, that briefing that we're, no? That, yeah, it just, this is just to start the process, to see if the Water Resource Commission would take it over. Again, there, there will be assessments involved. Right now, village council, like, if we were to do it right now, all we could do would be to have the burden on local, on our residents. This allows it to be shared with all of the people that are on the Mill Pond that would benefit from it, which is, you know, I mean, over, even where I live in like Buckhorn Creek area, it's dried up. So they might even look over in that area and say, you know, these people also are benefiting from it. We don't know what those, what the exact numbers are. The numbers, the 76 parcels or whatnot, that's just to get us in the door as far as...
So I understand that, my concern or question, I guess, was, is it says two, we're directing you, the village manager, pardon me?
Are you looking at item B?
Uh, I don't remember that. G?
No, on establishing a legal level, item B, it says the county may require a cash payment of up to $10,000 to cover the cost of the preliminary study in the back of this packet. So from, from our new business G, you head to like the third to last page, item B there. So is that what you were referring to?
No, I think it's even before that. So right now, we're directing the village manager to work with relevant stakeholders, including environmental experts. So are we granting you permission to go spend money, my question?
So I...
Environmental expert.
I, I'm not, I'm not spending any money on environmental experts at this time.
Perfect.
The only, like, again, that $10,000, again, if we get to that point, the idea would be, I believe, to do it out of the lake improvement fund that we already have, 150 in, I think, right now, that, that would be, or whatever that amount is at, to pull it from that, because that would eventually go to that improvement anyways.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel? Okay?
I think we should just bring some beavers in.
Okay.
Now, if people want to get rid of them, let's just bring them into here and set them over there and then we're good.
Beaver bait it is, you heard it here, folks. All right.
God.
If that's all, counsel?
Yep, that's it.
What's the matter, councilwoman Kyre?
Nothing.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Cascola?
Yes.
Kyre?
Yes.
Wendell?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Weinbruner?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes, motion carried. Lisa, will you please read item H?
Consideration of village council approval for the installation of the Apollo lift station by CSM Mechanical for a cost not to exceed $724,200.
Take it away.
Good evening, counsel. We started talking about this a couple of years ago, and we got approval when we went through the budget process this year. This comes out of the water and sewer fund. Row professional services worked to get a packet together for bids. We received three bids. In the notes there, LA Construction came in at the high bid at about one and a half million dollars. Waldorf and Sun was just under a million dollars, and CSM is 724. They're using a castle system, it's pretty like a pre-built lift station for, from Kennedy Industries, and Kennedy Industries is who does our pump maintenance, and we have a pump maintenance contract with them. So we'll be using familiar contractors and familiar equipment, and this does come under budget. This does not include any engineering costs or construction oversight from the engineers, so they'll probably come back with a second request there. But based on the numbers that Row, preliminary numbers from Row, will still come under budget of the 850,000.
And you said this did not include what costs?
Construction oversight or any more engineering costs from Row Engineering, because our engineering record, so.
Any clue what that might come to?
I think he said it was going to be less than $50,000, but he had not created a proposal yet, but he said if there was any question, so.
Which would still leave us on the eight.
Still, yeah, would put us...
Still under the eight, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, do I, let's see, where am I? Do I have a first to consider item H of new business?
Well, I have a question for it first.
No, we're going to do this in order. Do I have a first to consider item H of new business?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Ryan, we have a second by Weinbruner. Any public comment on this item? Hearing none, seeing none. Counsel discussion, please, Daniel?
Thank you, Madam President. Brian, is there warranty at all, or any warranties that come with it?
Yeah, there'll be standard, probably one, one-year workmanship on, on the workmanship, and then Kennedy Industry does our pump maintenance, so that it'll become part of our pump maintenance program after five years. But there's five-year warranties on the pumps, and so there'll be warranties, standard warranties across the board.
And how long is a pump like that scheduled to last?
Um, we're, we're hoping 50 years, so. It's a prefab poly frame, so it's going to last longer than the old tin cans that we're looking to get rid of, so.
So hopefully, we're not on council at that point.
Yeah. I'll be old and gray and can't walk in here.
All right, and this is something that has to be replaced and not just repaired?
Yes, yes. They've done repairs before I got here. We've, the, the village bought this lift station for a dollar, and it was probably the best dollar that guy made, and ran all the way to the bank with it, and we've had issues with it ever since, so.
Counsel? Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Kyre?
Yes.
Wendell?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Weinbruner?
Yes.
Cascola?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes, motion carried.
Thank you, counsel.
Lisa, will you please read item I?
Consideration of village council of hiring Barry Bass to grind the brush and wood pile at Sorenson for a price not to exceed $15,000.
Okay, and Brian, are you presenting?
Yes, I'm presenting. The village has an agreement with Township Parks to store collected brush from our adopted truck program and store the damage at Sorenson Park. And then periodically, the village hires a contractor to chip it up. Then the chips are distributed free of charge to township and village residents and then used for different projects. The last time this was done was in 2020. We've had several large storms and a lot of trees come down, so the pile is getting pretty large. In the meantime, between 2020 and today, the township has installed a disc golf course, so the brush pile is near one of their disc golf course holes, so there has been some concern about encroachment on that hole. So I, I tried, I solicited bids, it took me a while to get three bids. Ron Dennis did give me a price after the car was submitted of $31,000 to do the pile. JW Fields gave me a cost of $14,800 per day with an estimation of two to four days. And then Barry Bass said he'd come in and get it done for a flat rate of $15,000, and he's the one that did it in 2020.
Okay. Let's see, do I have a first to consider item I of new business?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion by Ryan.
I'll...
I have support by Weinbruner. Any public comment on this item? Yes, please.
Mary Blanchard, 3444 Old Creek Drive, Holly, Michigan. And as manager of Holly Township Parks, I would definitely ask for your support in approving this because it is quite extreme at this point and definitely needs to be handled. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Any other public comment? Okay, discussion, counsel. My only question is, is, like, that's, how long did Barry think it was going to take? Because this is, this is potentially a huge difference in a cost here from him to JW. Because this is, this is potentially a huge difference in a cost here from him to JW.
He did it last time, so he, he even said, he said, well, you probably got a cost of $60,000 to do this. He's a very, he owns Bedrock, so he's a very large corporation, and he likes to help out, so...
So he's insured?
Yeah, he's insured, and yeah, so. And he's aware, he came out and looked at the pile before he gave me a cost, so.
Okay.
He's aware of what's out there.
Anyone else, council?
Um, well, a few things. First, we can't mold, trip it up with none of our chip and stuff, right?
No, we don't have a, we have a chipper, but we'd be able to do some of the smaller brush, but not the larger, larger logs and stuff that are out there.
And then my other thing is, and pertains for Jeremy, is what about fire training? Where they could burn it for training with firefighters?
That'd be one heck of a bonfire.
I'd bring the marshmallows. I don't know, I don't know how big the pile is, but...
I, I feel like this is something that staff has put a lot of thought into about the best way to, to get rid of the woodchips and brush. Anything else, council?
Yeah, just a quick question, kind of piggyback on what Daniel was asking. Is it potential, like, in the future, that we may get a bigger chipper where we may be able to do this ourselves, and then?
Um, we may be able to take care of some of the brush, but the bigger logs and stuff like that. The one, the chipper we have will take about a 12-inch log, so any bigger trees in that, we'd need a tub grinder is what they use, not a chipper, so.
And those are expensive?
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're probably a half a million dollar machine, so.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Okay, there we go. All right.
I have been out to the park and seen this pile, and there are almost full trees.
It's impressive, huh?
It is not a small undertaking.
All right.
All right, a little side note for the future, is this a service we would want to continue in the future? Because we have a good deal now, will we always be able to get that kind of deal in the future for chipping all this stuff? Or is that like a service where we don't want to continue?
We charged for the adoptive truck, and we just raised the price because we knew this was coming up. So we, we're not, it's totally not out-of-pocket cost, but we would, we would have to eliminate the service, the adoptive truck service to the village residents if we, because we wouldn't have anywhere.
Right, is that money coming in, like, how much does that offset it for us?
Um, over the last five years, I'd have to take a look at what the average is for...
Your time's up.
Yeah. Hold on, no, I'd have to take a look at what the average is, but during the summer, from spring until fall, we're averaging probably one a week. So, but then the weekends, during the week, it's $25, and on the weekends, it was 50, now it's up to 50 and 100, so.
I'm just saying, in the future, it might be something we have to consider doing it if we can't afford it, or charge more for the adoptive truck.
Yeah.
Right. We got a good deal now, but five years from now, if you don't want to do it anymore, it's like $60,000 again?
Yeah, absolutely, that's why I appreciate Lisa's relook at our schedule of fees that we're charging everybody.
Well, the fees, the fees for adoptive truck are still 25 and 50.
No, they're 50 and 100 now. Or did they get re...
25 and 50.
Oh.
That's, that's the old one, that's the old.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we, we wanted to see the, we wanted to see the old fee schedule so that we could do a comparison, but good, good catch.
My other question, sorry about that, I didn't mean to jump the gun there again. Is there a way to have, instead of waiting five years or until the pile gets to encroaching abilities, we could have it as done like Tom was saying?
Yeah, we could, we could look at a long-term contract with Barry to see if he would set the price, so then we would know ahead of time what our fixed costs would be for that.
Yeah.
I wonder if it's possible to, if we're talking about Falk Road or whatever, is it potential that instead of like dumping that out at Sorenson, that we could put that onto our own property, and then we wouldn't have to worry about disc golf?
I believe they did that years ago at Falk Road, and they ran into some issues with complaints. And I'd have to check with Eagle, because I know they're putting the monitoring wells and stuff out there, so having access to make sure that we didn't disturb any of the monitoring wells would be an issue, so.
Counsel, anything else?
Um, when, they do distribute the woodchips, you said?
Yes.
Now, does that include, now, does that mean they just chip it there and leave the woodchips there?
They leave it there, and then the township has been offering freeloaded on the weekends. And they're, they offered it last weekend, and I believe they're offering it again this weekend. We did advertise it on our website, and the township is advertising it, so.
I know, because that's a big cost to try to get rid of all the chips.
And then eventually, it turns into like topsoil or mulch, so you can use garden mix, that kind of stuff, so.
Ryan, I do have one, it's the last weekend, we did have a problem with the...
This is going to have to wait until after, we're in the middle of a motion here. Counsel, any further discussion? Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Wendell?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Weinbrunner?
Yes.
Cascala?
Yes.
Kyer?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes, motion carried. And Lisa, will you please read item J?
Consideration of Village Council of the Contract with Young's Environmental to Pump and Dispose of the Backwash Waste at the Water Treatment Plant at a Cost Not to Exceed $40,110.
Take it away, Brian.
All right, we have a holding tank at, at the water treatment plant that holds our backwash waste. We treat our water to remove the arsenic by bonding it to the iron, and it creates an orange sludge. That sludge changes the chemical makeup or of the arsenic, but it's still considered a hazard, so we store it. We have to remove it because if we send it straight down to the wastewater plant, it limits our ability to land apply, so that costs, if we can't land apply, then our cost almost 10 times to 20 times as much, because then we would have to press it and dispose of it in landfill and bales. So by removing the arsenic, storing it, and then having this tank cleaned out, it'll, it keeps our arsenic levels low in our sludge. So we did this in 2021 with Young's. Young's is a local company out of Burton, Flint, so their mobilization costs are a lot cheaper. I tried to get ahold of plumbers in Grand Rapids, and there's another company to the south. When I did that in 20, they were, their mobilization costs were almost as much as the total project for this. So Young's is ready to go. I've had to put them off because they were ready to go before we, we've had some other things going on with council, but if this is approved, they'll do this in the next couple of weeks, which we're aligned with. We're getting ready to haul our sludge out at the wastewater plant, so they got to come and do the samples and make sure that our arsenic levels are in place, so.
Do I have a first to consider item J of new business?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Ryan, and that was kind of a tie. All right, we got a second by Wendell. Any public comment on this item? Hearing none and seeing none. All right, my first question, I see that you previously solicited bids, but Young's always came up...
Yes.
...with the lowest. Regardless, when, and expenses this great, isn't it policy to solicit three bids?
I did send the information to plumbers, and they asked for it, and they never responded back.
Okay.
So I did not get any, any comparison costs to that. I gave them what we paid in 2020, I gave them the size of the tank, and then I got no response, so.
And is there a third place local to solicit, or is this just kind of a?
It, they're south of Detroit, and I'm trying to think of their name, but when I did solicit three in 2020, like I said, the mobilization cost, because Young's is in Flint, Burton, they're close, and they do, they do work for, they've done work for us in the past at the water plant, and also part of the Saginaw Street Project, they're the local environmental company that all the municipalities in this area use, so.
Okay, thank you. Counsel?
Um, I would like to just make a statement that I appreciate how you included the line item for the budget in there for us to go back and look at. That's really helpful for that, so, thank you for that.
Yep.
Counsel?
And also just to clarify for those at home, since it wasn't mentioned, this is not coming out of the general fund?
No, this is water, this is also water, this is a water project cost. And it was discussed at the budget assessment.
All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Ryan?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Weinbrunner?
Yes.
Cascala?
Yes.
Kyer?[1597.21]